Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Menlo Park City Council meeting, special meeting for November 12th, 2019. This time, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. All council members are present. I'm going to take a moment and introduce everyone. So down off the dais, to our far left, excuse me, is our city attorney, Mr. Bill McClure. Next to him, to his immediate right, is our city manager, Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson. To my far left on the dais is council member Catherine Carlton. To my immediate left is Mayor Protem Cecilia Taylor. To my immediate right is council member Betsy Nash. To her immediate right is council member Drew Combs. And then down off the dais, excuse me, is our city clerk, Ms. Judy Heron. If you have any, if you'd like to comment on any of the items currently in front of the council this evening, you can fill out a comment card in the back of the room and provide that to Ms. Heron, so we know when to call you when the item is called. If everyone could go ahead and please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as this is a special meeting, we don't have an open, a public comment period this evening. We're going to go ahead and move directly to the consent calendar. Does anyone have anything led back to pull from the consent calendar?
D two.
Any other items to be pulled from the consent calendar?
D three.
Okay, there's been a request to move D two actually to, and talk about it later on in the agenda, so we'll do that. Councilmember Nash, do you have any, any specific questions that you have for staff regarding D three?
I...
Or would you like us to deal with that independently and go ahead and move the consent calendar now?
Let's do that.
All right, so can I have a motion for item D one and D four? Councilmember Nash has moved. Can I have a second? Mayor Protem Taylor, a second, and let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, would you like us to handle D three now, or would you like to go ahead and move it to the, later on, the calendar?
Let's move it to later on.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and move D three to later on in the calendar and take up our first regular business item. That would be item E one, Adopt Urgency Ordinance 1063, implementing eviction protections and limiting large rental rate increases effective immediately to avoid circumvention of AB 1482. The Assistant City Attorney, Kara Silva, will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Kara Silva, Assistant City Attorney. I'm also joined by Rhonda Kaufman, the Deputy Community Development Director. We will be discussing the urgency ordinance, which is designed to implement AB 1482 as directed by the city council at its last meeting. So in terms of background, on October 8th, 2019, the governor signed AB 1482, which requires just cause to evict tenants, and it also sets a statewide annual rent cap. Following adoption of AB 1482, some tenants began reporting no cause evictions and unanticipated large rent increases. In the past couple of weeks, several cities, in order to address some of these eviction actions and notices, have adopted urgency ordinances implementing AB 1482 immediately. The cities have taken different approaches to this early adoption. On November 5th, 2019, one of the housing commissioners in Menlo Park notified council members that a Menlo Park landlord had recently served a 60-day no-fault notices on two tenants in a five-unit apartment building. As a result of hearing that information, on November 5th, the city council directed the city attorney to draft an urgency ordinance implementing 1482 immediately. Since that time, there has been several cases of no cause evictions and large rent increases that have come to staff's attention. There is one address located at 837 Live Oak, which is a four-unit apartment building with a single-family home located on the lot. Three tenants at that apartment building recently received 60-day notices to vacate. One of the tenants has lived in the unit since 1991. She pays $1,225 a month in rent, and she also serves as the apartment manager. Her total income, monthly income, is $3,040 a month. One of the other tenants is a senior citizen. She's lived in the unit since 2006 or 2007. She is recovering from a leg amputation. She was recently denied disability, so she is on a limited income, and it would obviously be very difficult for her to find an alternative apartment unit, given her medical condition. Another building that came to our attention is located at 954 Fremont Street, and it is a multi-unit apartment complex. We are aware of at least five units in that complex that received large rent increases in excess of the amounts allowed under AB 1482. Of the five units that received these rent increases, two of the tenants received a 20% increase, one tenant received a 13% increase, and two tenants received 11% increases. And these notices were served in the last month or two. So I want to just briefly summarize AB 1482. It is a complex piece of legislation. It has two main components. The first component is the just cause protections. The second component is the rent cap protections. I've put the summary of the just cause provisions on this chart on the screen. And in terms of the eligibility for the just cause provisions, they are triggered with a, or they apply to tenants that have occupied the unit for at least 12 months or more. There is a series of exempt units that are not subject to just cause protections, and they are listed here on the slide. Things like dormitories, deed-restricted affordable units, certain ADUs, certain cohousing, and rental units covered by a local just cause ordinance. But most of Menlo Park's housing stock would be subject to AB 1482 just cause provisions. The protections that are in the state law include basically a new definition under state law of just cause. Just cause under, under the state law now contains two different components. The first is what the state law refers to as at-fault just cause, which is things like non-payment of rent, breach of lease agreement, nuisance, that type of thing. Tenants can, of course, be evicted for at-fault reasons, like not paying their rent. And, but, so that particular section, the at-fault just cause is one ground for evicting tenants. The second ground for evicting tenants is called no-fault just cause. And this ground is similar to the ordinance that you adopted several months ago regarding no-fault tenant relocation. And these types of issues involve owner occupancy, Ellis Act, if a landlord is going out of the rental business, the intent to substantially remodel, things like that. Those are characterized as no-fault just cause. A landlord is entitled to evict on that ground. However, under state law, the landlord must provide one month relocation, one month of rent in relocation benefits to the tenant. There's also a provision in state law that says that if a local ordinance provides more relocation, then the, the local relocation benefits would, would apply. And in Menlo Park's case, since we provide three months of relocation, our relocation ordinance, rental provision would apply in cases of no-fault just cause. The effective date of this portion of the ordinance is January 1, excuse me, of the state law is January 1, 2020, and it expires January 1, 2025. So it's a five-year bill. The second component of AB 1482 deals with rent caps. And this is, the provision for a statewide, essentially, rent control law is that a landlord can impose a rent increase of 5% plus CPI in a 12-month period. And if the landlord wants to impose a rent increase, they can do so no, no more than two times in a 12-month period, and the total rent increase for a 12-month period cannot exceed that 5% plus CPI. CPI is currently 4%, so in this situation, a landlord cannot impose more than 9% in a 12-month period. If CPI goes above 4%, the rent increases is capped at, at a total of 10%. The rent cap provision also has a list of exempt units. It is more limited than the just cause units, and the, the exempt units are listed on, on this slide. The effective date of the rent cap provision is also January 1, 2020, with an expiration of January 1, and that's, I just see there's a, there's a typo on this slide. It expires on January 1, 2025, so it also is a, is a five-year bill. However, the rent cap section has a retroactivity provision. And what, that, how that works is that the bill states that rent increases after March 15th, 2019, must comply with this law that goes into effect on January 1, 2020. However, if the rent increases exceed the amount allowed under AB 1482, which is, at this point, 9%, there is no remedy in the law. The landlord may keep the overpayment if the tenant elects to pay the, the excess rent increase. However, the, the law does provide that if there is an excessive rent increase that takes place during this interim period of March 15th to January 1 of the following year, that as of January 1, the rent rolls back to the March 15th level plus the allowed increase. As you can see, this is a very complex set of, of regulations. So I've tried to map it out here on, on this chart, and we can make this available to the public, so that it can be better understood. So the original council justification for the ordinance was a concern about the gap period between essentially the date, today's date, and the effectiveness of AB 1482. So that's an approximate two-and-a-half-month period before 1482 goes into effect. Now, there is one aspect that some cities have, have been talking about, and that is, on October 27th, 2019, the governor declared a statewide emergency in connection with the wildfires. And there is a related section that is contained in the penal code, which says that if there is a statewide emergency declared by the governor, that there shall be no price gouging. And one of the elements of prohibited price gouging is increased rental rates. It also has some limitations on evictions for, under certain circumstances. Now, it's not clear to us whether this anti-rent gouging penal code section would provide a complete defense to a tenant in an unlawful detainer action. It's in the penal code. It sets a criminal penalty for rent gouging. It does not provide a civil remedy on its face, and it does not provide a civil affirmative defense to an unlawful detainer action on its face. Of course, a tenant could argue that a violation of this penal code section would be a defense to an unlawful detainer action. So I wanted to, to raise that issue. I, I think that there is some uncertainty around the effectiveness, or the, the ability to, to use that statewide emergency and the, and the anti-price gouging, but it, it could be available to tenants to, to utilize. So the, the real, so that still leaves to what we are kind of framing as loopholes in, in 1482. First of all, the legislation, the good cause provisions kick in on January 1, and so any landlord that wants to eliminate a tenancy is sort of incentivized to serve an unlawful detainer action, serve a notice to quit before January 1, when that ability is, is taken away by the state law. The second sort of loophole is the retroactivity of the rent caps that we referred to earlier, and the fact that it, the tenant is placed in an awkward situation, because if they get a notice to pay an excessive rent increase, and they don't comply with that, then they risk an unlawful detainer action. They do have a, a defense to that unlawful detainer action, but of course, that's, that's a difficult thing to go through. On the other hand, if they pay the, the excessive rent, the law, as I mentioned, allows the landlord to keep the, the excessive rent, and the landlord is not required to refund overpayments. So that's the other gap that the urgency ordinance attempts to address. So in terms of the urgency ordinance, what, what it does is it incorporates AB 1482 and makes it effective immediately as of today's date, if the council adopts the ordinance. As for just cause protections, it clarifies that all future notices must comply with AB 1482's just cause provisions, and it clarifies that all unlawful detainer actions commenced after today's date must also comply with the just cause protections. As for the rent cap component, the local ordinance provides that any rent increases in excess of AB 1482 are invalid to the extent of the overage. It does allow the landlord to essentially cure that defective notice by giving a 10-day notice of the proper rent increase to the tenant. And it provides the tenant with a, an affirmative defense to assert in an unlawful detainer action as to any invalid rent cap, or rent increase notice. So that concludes my presentation. I did want to note that we have a supplemental staff report and a supplemental ordinance that addresses two issues that, that were brought up to us after the, the ordinance had been published and circulated, and so we've, we posted that updated ordinance today. And I also want to point out, of course, that any urgency ordinance that is passed by the council must be passed on a four-fist vote. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone want to ask any questions before we hear our public comment? Okay, councilmember Nash.
Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to clarify that the ordinance actually goes into effect January 1st, 2020, because Slide 6 said January 1st, 2019. Thank you.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions before we take public comment? Okay, let's go ahead then, and open up public comment. At this time, our first public speaker this evening will be Anil Babar.
Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and city council. On behalf of the California Apartment Association, I'd like to express our concerns on the proposed ordinance. We believe that the proposed ordinance before you has been redundant due to existing state law. State law requires a 60-day notice to terminate a tenancy that is older than a year. 60 days from today places us in 2020, when AB 1482 kicks in. So any tenant who is not receiving eviction notice as of today is protected by AB 1482 already, essentially. Furthermore, your city attorney recently expressed some concerns with making the ordinance retroactive, as it may place the city in some legal liability. Therefore, we feel that the property owners and tenants of Menlo Park can be better served in the interim period between now and 1482 is enacted by educating both groups, both landlords and tenants, about, A, their rights as a property owner, and B, their, or sorry, their rights as a, as a tenant, and their responsibilities as a property owner under the new law. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker this evening is Carol Malnick. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I'm, my name is Carol Malnick. I'm a resident of Menlo Park, and I want to strongly urge you to support this urgency ordinance before you, because I think the case has been made that we need to protect tenants before AB 1482 goes into effect. Exorbitant rent increases, which are equivalent to economic eviction, and the no, no cause evictions have been reported throughout the region, as our attorneys have noted, and I'm sure the vast majority of landlords would never do such a thing to their tenants, and yet numerous tenants have already been harmed by economic and no cause evictions. It only takes a few landlords to cause a world of hurt, especially during a time when colder weather is coming in and the holidays. So I ask you to protect the 15,000 tenants who rent here in Menlo Park and pass this emergency ordinance, urgency ordinance. Thank you again for taking up this issue very quickly tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Susan Lacoste.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Susan Lacoste. I'm 72 years old and have lived in my apartment on Live Oak Avenue for 27 years. I'm retired after working in various departments at Stanford University for over 40 years. You don't know me, but you may have seen me pedaling around town on my bicycle with colorful pinwheels attached to the crate on my back fender. I believe the pinwheels catch the attention of drivers on their cellphones, and they don't hit me, and the pinwheels make people smile. I live a quiet life, and I'm content to garden, pet my cat, and watch old movies, reruns, and cable news shows on TV. I received an eviction notice with no warning, and it was like a punch in the stomach. This apartment has been my home for 27 years, and bam, get out, you've got two months. The landlord called me after the notice had been issued and said he was sorry for any inconvenience, and hoped that because of our long friendship, I would cooperate and leave without a fight. Friends don't throw friends under the bus. Ironically, we got, my other two neighbors and I got the notice that the eviction was going to happen on October 8th in the afternoon, the same day that Gavin Newsom signed the law. I have a pension from Stanford, but if I spend twice as much for rent, it means that the money will last only half as long, and then what? I don't know what to do. I check Craigslist every other day, and I get queasy. I have contacted some of the local, low-income senior housing facilities. They don't even have waiting lists. Crane Place told me to check back in six months. I emailed another one and haven't heard back. I have furniture, and since I don't know where I'm going, I don't know how much of it to get rid of. I know there is a good place out there for me and my cat, but I will need time to find it. Please pass this ordinance to protect residents like me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Stacy Townsend.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Stacy Townsend. I'm a staff attorney with the Housing Program at Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto. I'm here today because our organization has seen several landlords throughout the county preemptively evicting tenants from their homes in response to the passage of AB 1482, either in the form of an economic eviction or in an actual eviction forcing people out of their homes. This city council has a moral responsibility to take action tonight to protect Menlo, Menlo Park residents from being pushed out of their community. Some of those residents include three of my clients, who all received no cause 60-day eviction notices the day Governor Newsom signed AB 1482 into law. I'm going to share the story of my client Laura Gates, because she can't be here, because she has severe mobility challenges. Laura is elderly and has lived in her apartment for 13 years. It has been her home while she's endured several medical diagnoses and complications, including lupus, cancer, and a leg amputation. If evicted, Laura would have nowhere to go and would have no way to continue living in this community. She would also have to stop seeing her local and trusted medical providers and find care elsewhere. Residents like Laura are the ones that this urgency ordinance would protect. Menlo Park has the opportunity to follow suit with the several other San Mateo County cities and cities across the state who have adopted similar urgency ordinances. The trend line is that localities across the state are taking immediate action when hearing that their citizens and their residents are impacted, and Menlo Park should not be an outlier in that respect. There's a tremendous need to protect Menlo Park renters immediately, and this city council has the power to do that tonight by passing this urgency ordinance, and I sincerely hope that you will do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Rachel Horst.
Good evening, council members. First, I want to thank you, and I want to thank staff for responding so quickly and dexterously to this problem as it was identified in our community. It is much appreciated by myself and, and many others here, so, so thank you. And all I want to say is, I think we're all intimately familiar at this point, thanks to the presentation as well, with the spirit and the content of AB 1482, and the gaps in that law were clearly laid out for you tonight, and we have cases that we know of that have happened in the community. Those addresses, when they were read, you know, those people are my neighbors. I've maybe done door knocking there. I might have even run into them. And so it, it makes me personally very upset to hear that, that my neighbors could be facing displacement in anticipation of just simply trying to avoid... displacement in anticipation of just simply trying to avoid a law that is about to take effect. So I just ask you tonight to consider that, and to please join other cities in taking this important step to protect our community from no-fault evictions and follow the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Ryan Carrigan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hope you're doing well. Ryan Carrigan, Southern Valley Association of Realtors. I don't particularly object to any prospective urgency ordinance you consider tonight. Most of that, as you know, is basically because this is mostly a moot point with the governor's emergency declaration, the retroactive, or March 15th caps, and how those apply, and that type of thing. So to that effect, you know, taking a look at some of these unfortunate circumstances statewide rent control has brought us certainly is probably a good thing to do. I do want to point out that our association, the California Association of Realtors, is working proactively with our members who are housing providers to get them the materials, the documents, all the things that they need to be ready for the implementation date on January 1st, to have the correct lease addendums, disclosures, documents that are necessary to comply with AB 1482. And one of them, as I'm sure you are aware, is that now to qualify for the exemptions under the bill, we have to proactively notify tenants that they are in a property, you know, that is exempt, notably, single-family homes, which is basically the basis of which I want to bring up tonight. And that's just to ask, to hope that whatever you guys consider, you take some time to clarify and make sure it's very clear that any urgency ordinance is still in compliance with state cost of Hawkins law. It still would need to exempt single-family homes and those type of things, whether or not it meditates effect, or if you should have the legal basis to somehow look at some sort of retroactive date and that type of thing. So it's just something that continually comes up with my members. There's obviously a lot of confusion. I'm sure that's led to some of the circumstances that have brought us here to consider emergency ordinance, and would just ask that you, you know, take some time to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Larry Dahl.
Good evening, council. I'm Larry Dahl. I live on Live Oak Avenue. I don't have any scary story about evictions or anything, but I'm a member of the community, and even one of them scares me. After listening to the legal arguments this evening, I wish I'd gone to law school. It wasn't something I wanted to do when I was younger, but I really can understand this, this stuff. So I'm glad, I hope that you all can. And I worry about this town, because it's taken so long to get any change. I mean, with, the rents have been going up for five, six, seven years at an enormous rate. I'm lucky, I have one of the few owners who hasn't really gouged. My rent's only gone up by a factor of 10 in the 46 years I've lived in my apartment. That's not bad, but considering how small it is, it's really, maybe it is bad. I don't mind living in a small place, but I would like to see this town not be evicting people like has happened in other cities. And I wish the ordinance that the state has produced would have been a little more, less generous in terms of the 5% plus whatever the CPI, the Consumer Price Index. It could have been a little less than that, and landlords would have not suffered too much. So I hope you do something, not so much for me personally, but I'd like to see this community stay as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Andrew Naylor. Go Giants!
Thank you. I just heard about this ordinance two hours ago. I'm sorry, I didn't better communicate my story to the council or to staff earlier. I ask you to support the urgency notice before you. I've lived here in the same apartment in Menlo Park for nine years. My son goes to MCC. We live in a small, three-unit apartment complex. Our rent was increased 35% this year, 8% last year. Another tenant in our complex has raised 20% this year, 8% last year. I'm worried about no-cause eviction before January 1st. We're a single-income household with a two-year-old, and my wife is pregnant. Please help protect our family and the families in Menlo Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Camacho.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Karen Camacho, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We're a nonprofit organization that works with communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes. And I'm here tonight to ask you to preserve affordable housing, to preserve the lives of families who live here and who make up the fabric of our community. Evictions and rent increases are a public health problem. What do you do when you have a health problem? You protect the public health through policy. Similar to requiring restaurant owners to adhere to a basic standard of cleanliness, local governments should require basic standards for managing habitation. Requiring landlords to have a reason for eviction and capping their rent increases is a baseline standard of decency that we need in order to protect our renters. So please, tonight, pass the urgency ordinance, which requires rent just cause eviction and forbids rent gouging. And we really appreciate your speedy response, and again, we really urge you to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker this evening is Pamela Jones.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller, Mayor Pro Tem Taylor, council members Combs, Nash, Carlton, and staff. My name is Pamela Jones. I'm a homeowner in Menlo Park for over 45 years. I'm also a landlord. I want to thank you for bringing this up and having a special meeting this evening in order to do what's in the best interest of the residents of Menlo Park. I hope between the last meeting on the 5th and today that there has been no eviction notices, nor have there been substantial increase notices, because if that has happened, it does tell us about who are renting, who are landlords in the city of Menlo Park. It is important that we look out for the well-being of all of our residents, regardless of whether they're homeowners, landlords, or tenants. So I urge you to pass the ordinance this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Nancy Shorm.
Good evening, Nancy Shorm. I live at 954 Fremont Street, and I am a tenant there, and I've been living there for over 20 years. And I just wanted to let you know that my rent was significantly increased starting January. I also wanted to let you know a little bit about the tenants in my complex. Young families, all in Menlo Park, obviously, attending schools here. They're not here this evening, but they're supporting me, and I just hope you would really consider this. I know other renters that haven't come this evening, but are here in the spirit with me, so I just wanted to let you know that. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is John Pimentel.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is John Pimentel. I live at 168 East Creek Drive, and I just wanted to urge the council to take this action. It's the simple result of, I think, unintended consequences of best-intended policy to create this gap. And so, common sense would dictate that we wouldn't want to create a disincentive or a misaligned incentive for landlords to take action to try and evict tenants in order to get around or circumvent this rule. So let common sense prevail and adopt the emergency ordinance, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies, I see your signs. Do you want to come up and use your voice? Does one of you want to come up and speak, and the other can hold their signs and go on record? Yes, you can. Please come up and introduce yourself, and you can fill out a comment card and give it to the clerk afterwards.
Thank you so much for the acknowledgement, and just for the cue, like the prompt for us to come up. We finished up our programming a little bit early to be here and support, and just because Menlo Park is a beloved community, sister community to us. My name is Ophelia Bayou. I'm the Director of Youth United for Community Action. And yeah, I want to cede the microphone to our young people, our youth organizers, so they can tell you a little bit about why we support, strongly support, you taking this action today. Thank you so much.
Hello. So my name is Valeria Bejinas. I'm a core member here at Youth United for Community Action in East Palo Alto. So we focus a lot on social and environmental justice in our community, and one of our main focuses is housing in East Palo Alto, but we know that Menlo Park is a sister community, like our director said. So we care a lot about the community. So that's why we are here today, to try and fight for the housing in Menlo Park. And here are all our lovely posters. Mine says, "Be an ethical landlord." So that kind of speaks for itself, and I'll let the other people introduce it. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Christina Visera. I'm a core member at UCA, and we're working on a housing campaign at UCA to kind of make housing affordable and to protect tenants. So my poster says, "Protect tenants." Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kimberly Nunez, and I'm also a core member at UCA. My poster says, "Two-thirds of children in displaced households had to change schools," which is also something that could be caused, or it could be disrupted by the Just Cause Act or policy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other public comment cards this evening? Nope. All right. So let's go ahead and bring it up here then for questions. Who would like to go first? Do you guys want to take a brief recess? Okay, we have a motion to accept. Do I have a second? Do we have a second?
I have questions if nobody does.
Okay.
All right. For Mr. McClure, or whoever wants to answer. On page 35, it says, "The proposed ordinance would prevent landlords from acting on any eviction notice served after November 12th." How much notice do they have to give? Is it 60 days' notice?
So, I apologize, I don't have page numbers. So...
It's under analysis of the staff report.
Okay.
Under just cause protection. It says the ordinance would protect landlords, would prevent landlords from acting on any eviction notice served after November 12th, if the notice was not based on just cause.
Correct.
How much notice do they have to give?
So, to evict, so your question is, how much notice...
If someone after November 12th wants to evict someone, how much notice do they have to give?
Okay. So it varies depending on the lease. After November 12th, you can't evict for no cause. You have to have just cause. And depending on the lease provisions, sometimes that's three days, sometimes it's...
Hold on, Becca. I say November 12th, because the ordinance before us that we're voting on will only help people. It says, "The proposed ordinance would prevent landlords from acting on any eviction notice served after November 12th." So that means that it doesn't help people who got evictions before November 12th, by definition.
So the amended, the redlined amended ordinance that I think before you would also apply to any eviction where the process was started before November 24th, but the eviction occurs after November 12th, it would apply to those as well. That's the redline version that was posted today and is on the dais.
Okay. Why November 12th?
That's today. That's the effective date of the adoption of the ordinance.
So again, how much notice do they have to give?
Well, so for...
I thought it was 60 days.
So a tenancy less than one year is a 30-day notice. A tenancy that is more than one year is a 60-day notice. So a landlord who has already given a notice prior to today, but it's not effective yet, but it's effective before the end of the year, it would apply to those landlords.
So in essence, Kat, what this means is that if someone started a 58-day notice, if someone started a process 58 days ago to evict, and we pass this tonight, then it would stop that eviction.
Unless it was for just cause.
Unless it was for just cause. So, yeah, but that's basically, by passing the ordinance written in this way, it's going to go back to if eviction process was started 58 or 59 days ago.
As long as they're still in their homes.
As long as they're still in their homes. And, yeah, that's right.
So it says that the landlord could proceed if it was based on a no-fault just cause, but would have to pay relocation payments as specified under AB 1482, or the city's recently adopted tenant relocation ordinance, whichever is more protective. Which is more protective? Is the city's or the state's?
So the city's provides three months of rent payments, and then an additional one month if special circumstances are satisfied, and so the city's is more protective.
City's is more protective. Okay.
Yes.
Excuse me, only if you're 80% AMI or below. Otherwise...
Special circumstances, yes, that's correct.
Could you please explain?
Yes.
Thank you.
So you get a, I believe it's three months of rent regardless, but you get an additional one-month rent if special circumstances are satisfied. And I believe there's an AMI requirement, and I can't recall off the top of my head what it is.
Could you please confirm that? Because my understanding was that there's an 80% AMI requirement in order to get the three months.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And if there isn't, then I would, that would be good news. Thank you. But my understanding is that it only, the city pays through Samaritan House if you're at 80% AMI or below. If you're above 80% AMI, then you do not qualify for payments through the city. And the one, the additional month, I'm not sure of whether that requires an AMI or not.
So I'm looking at the ordinance, and you're correct. It says that an eligible residential household is a household whose annual, household income does not exceed 80% of the area median household income for San Mateo County as adjusted, blah, blah, blah. And then the special circumstances are one, at least one member is over 62, at least one member qualifies for disability, a household with one or more minor children, a household that has occupied their unit as their primary residence for five or more consecutive years.
And so my understanding is that the state law is actually more generous for anyone who's over 80% AMI.
Correct.
Thank you.
Great. I just want to make sure I understand this. And then with regard to the single-family homes, someone mentioned, and I know that the state also said if you're running out of room in your house, or if you have some area of your house that's quartered off, whether it's a duplex or whatever, that that is not included in this. Is that also one of the areas that's carved out in the city? Or does the city match the state, or is that covered in the city or not?
Let's see. Let's see. So the, these, the city's ordinance does not align completely with the state, obviously. And the two state, the rental cap provisions and the just cause provisions are different in terms of the exempt units. But the city's ordinance that applies has several different exceptions. It has, let's see, it says eight exceptions. And it does include, one of the exceptions is a room or any other portion of the residential unit which is occupied by the landlord or a member of the landlord's immediate family.
Okay. And so basically what, I just want to make absolutely sure because there's so many moving parts to this. And we've got this versus this that we didn't really get a full layout of. And it's been so long, I don't remember all the details of what we put in there. So basically what this will do, to get down to the nitty-gritty, is it will prevent landlords from evicting people from their homes unless they are moving into it, they're not going to rent it anymore, or they have really extensive renovations that they're going to do. Besides that, it will prevent them from having someone evicted. Is that correct?
Well, there are-
There's all the, there's all the at-fault provisions as well.
Oh, sorry, and at-fault, like if they're a nuisance or-
And not paying their rent.
Exactly, not paying rent and going out of the, you know, going out of the rental business. There are several grounds where a landlord could evict.
So beyond, so I guess what I'm saying is they could get around this if they wanted to. But what we're doing is for the purely no cause, this will prevent them, fully prevent them from evicting people, correct?
Yes, the intent of the ordinance is really focused on the, some of the tenants that spoke to you tonight that received a 60-day notice to vacate for no reason. There was, they were paying their rent. The landlord wasn't, didn't say that they were going to significantly remodel the building. They weren't going out of the rental business. There was just no reason. The landlord just served them with a 60-day notice with no explanation and said, "Vacate the unit in 60 days."
And this will prevent them from doing that?
That's correct.
Okay, so that I get. The rent cap is weird because there's this rollback thing to March. So one of the things that came before us is, you know, raise someone's rent 20%, 25%. It doesn't really matter because it's going to roll back to March anyway?
No, it's not accurate. So if they raise their rent, if they raise their rent. So actually, what's that issue between, if you ask me what's at issue tonight? What's at issue tonight is the difference between the date of September 16th, which is as far back as we would roll this under this ordinance, to the date of October 27th, when the governor signed the emergency ordinance on the emergency proclamation setting rent at 10% in the state under Penal Code 3, whatever, 96. For that time period right now, there's no protection for renters on a rent cap, on a rental increase because it's outside the 60 days to the end of the year. If that, if that rent, if that raise of rent were, if they had their rents raised during that time period, they could be locked in that rent and they could still face a 60-day eviction notice because it's before the time period at which the new law kicks in. And there would be no rollback in January because that rent increase would already be in effect. So literally what we're looking at, as I distill this down, is the difference between the 1% of what the governor has as an emergency proclamation from October 27th, probably to the end of the year, and then a date between September 16th to October 26th, which unfortunately, when you look at what happened to people in our city, we've had quite a few, quite a few evictions, notices and rent raises take place during that time period, as we heard this evening. The, so that's, that's really when you crystallize it, it comes down to that and how we deal with that.
Comes down to 1%. That's, we're doing this for 1%?
We're doing it for 1% from what the difference, no, we're doing that for 1% from October 27th to the end of the year and then the fall, and then the fall between September 16th to October 26th. Because then during that time period, there is no limit what it could be raised.
Okay, so that confuses me because I just had a meeting before with Mr. McClure who said, and as I read this, that the, any rent increases above the 9% or 10%, depending on when it's done, gets rolled back to that level in January. Is that not correct?
That is my understanding of what the state law does, is that rent increases actually get rolled back. But if they have collected rent-
Then they're stuck in it.
Over and above that, up until January 1, 2020, they get to keep that. But that effective January 1, 2020, the rent has to be rolled back to what it was in March plus cost of living plus 5%. And again, the legislation is pretty darn confusing, but that is my understanding of what it does.
So that's what I, that's what I read too.
So then basically then what we're looking is at September 16th to October 26th, then that's the injury time period. So it's not going to be what happens after that unless, because October, but except that the governor's proclamation on the 26th or the 27th didn't roll back rents. So they're not going to see a rollback in rent on that from what happens between the 16th to the end of the year. They don't see a rollback in that.
Yeah, the governor's, so the penal code section, because I mean, I just, again, I just-
It's rent gouging at 10%.
Read it right while I was, it only applies to notices given during the emergency period, which is a 30-day period.
Right, but the problem, but the thing is, Bill, that the 30-day period runs from October 26th to, October 27th to November 27th. If you gave an eviction notice after that, you're within the 60-day time period, so the statute takes effect.
Correct.
So you're really looking at the 16th to the 27th as the time where people could be-
Well, so there are two issues. One is rent increases, one is notices of termination of tenancy.
Right.
So effectively, again, my understanding is, is that the state legislation does not protect people who have already received a notice. Whether they receive it, you know, and the effective date is after the effective date of the new state legislation, I don't think it retroactively invalidates those notices, but I could be wrong. I mean, I-
That's, that's what I originally thought too then. Okay.
So it really is protecting people from no-fault evictions all the way through the end of the year because theoretically, a landlord could give the notice on December 31st to be effective 60 days later and it would still be effective because the notice was given prior to January 1, 2020. But I mean, I could be wrong, but that's my understanding.
That's the no-fault. So, yeah, that's the no-fault. I was talking about the rent cap, the rent increase. So the rent increase, they're locked, starting October. They're basically locked.
Yeah, because effectively, if someone has been there over a year, it's a 60-day notice of rent increase.
So they're locked now.
Correct.
So for the rent increase, we're looking at a time period of September 16th to October 26th. That's at issue. But for the just, for the just cause eviction, we're just, that's all in play because it wasn't covered by the penal code.
Correct.
So I'm not talking about just costs. Let's stop talking about eviction because that's a, that's a separate thing. I'm talking about rent increase.
Correct.
Any rent increase will go back to March on January 1st.
Under state law. That is my understanding. It rolls back to that plus CPI plus five, plus 5%. So a 9%.
So they can raise it as much as they want. It's still going to go back on January 1st to March plus 9% or 10%?
Yes, with one exception. And that, one more exception to that is my understanding, again, of the state law is if a person is not aware of the change of law that rolls the rent back, the landlord doesn't have to repay any overpayment of rent. Now, whether that's true in 2020 or not, I'm not 100% clear, but that's a possibility.
So that gets back, thank you. That gets back to exactly what I was saying. We can do this, but what we really, really, really need to do is communicate out to people to let them know, yeah, they raised your rent 20%. January 1st, it goes down to 10. They raised it 50%. It doesn't matter. January 1st, it goes down to 10 or 9. And the onus is on people to know this, which is freaky, frustrating. And so I'm deeply concerned about making sure that people know this because that makes a big difference. And my next question then is if the landlord doesn't tell them because the law says they have to roll it back and they charge more, isn't that against the law? And who enforces that? Because on the urgency, it's criminal, but otherwise it's civil. I'm worried about the moving parts. It's always, it's always the details that make these things.
We'll just say, in terms of enforcement, I think that was covered. There's a couple nonprofit legal organizations that support tenants with housing issues. So Community Legal Services of East Palo Alto and Legal Aid, both will assist tenants with this matter. In terms of getting the word out, yeah, there's a need for that. We do work with Project Sentinel, which is a fair housing organization. And Project Sentinel is also who we refer folks to. We have that on our website. When we, housing staff gets calls and emails and walk-in customers every day asking us about housing issues. And so we do refer out, and that really is Project Sentinel's role. And I, but I know our legal organizations also do some outreach around that. And a lot of our nonprofit organizations are doing so as well.
So I was also told that for this, for the rent, that there is affirmative defense. There's affirmative defense that because the rent can't be raised above a certain amount, that you can't be thrown out. Granted, we've got, what, two months? But nonetheless, that there's an affirmative defense that if they've raised it above whatever, you don't have to pay more than 10% or 9%, depending. And we need to, we need to, again, we need to communicate that to people because if you overpay, they don't have to give it back.
So that would be one of the benefits in adopting the urgency ordinance is the urgency ordinance does create an affirmative defense. The state law does not expressly create an affirmative defense.
I was told that there is an affirmative defense for the state law, that people need to know they don't have to pay the extra amount.
Yeah, it's not expressly called out as an affirmative defense, but if I were, you know, a tenant's lawyer, I would certainly raise it as an affirmative defense.
All right. So on the rent cap, what this is effectively doing, with all the legal words aside, what it's effectively doing is providing affirmative defense for people to not pay more than 10%? Because this is so complicated. As someone said, you know, it's great that you have a lawyer. Not everybody has one. Not everyone has access to one. Not everyone has time. I mean, Jesus, I have a kid. I'm lucky that I have a husband that helps take care of them. Not everyone has the time to take off work, to be away from your kids, to get the legal advice on this. And so I'm concerned, what is this really doing and how are we really communicating this to people? Like, how do we make this really effective? And making sure that we really understand what this is really doing and how we really communicate this to people. So what this is doing is basically more clarifying to people the 10% cap that, and that they have this affirmative defense. It's not changing anything in terms of rent because it's going to get rolled back anyway. It's just making sure that people don't lose their homes in the next two months for not paying that extra amount. Is that correct?
Yes, I think that-
Except for the time period from September 16th to October 26th.
Right, right.
And how is that different?
So there is a, you can assert a defense to an unlawful detainer action for any notice that was served before, you know, before the effective date, November 12th. So that allows a little bit more protection for that interim period as well.
Now, that brings up the other question, which is weirdly, that month it becomes criminal for the landlord. It's not civil. So if it is criminal for them to then raise the rent, to gouge, does the police then get involved if it's a crime? Who enforces that? You see where I'm, you see where I'm going with it?
Is that? So is that a misdemeanor?
So, so the chief has just reminded me that the DA's office takes care of the anti-rent gouging under the penal code.
Okay, that's great. So what this gets down to is it prevents people from being caught in the loophole of being evicted for no cause during a certain period of time. And it provides people an affirmative defense for the 10% cap, which they would have had anyway. And except for the, except for that one month, which is weird.
But I need to find out, can I ask a question and follow up?
Please.
Because I wasn't, I didn't have any problem doing it until we just said that. So, so for the October, so from September 16th to October 26th, what we're saying is we're applying a retroactive misdemeanor ordinance to people who have raised the rent over that amount.
No, 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 no.
Then, yeah, can we clarify what is that by?
This is not a criminal violation in our ordinance.
Okay, so it's not a criminal violation.
But in the state it is.
But okay.
But the violation of the emergency declaration is the penal code section.
Oh, yeah, the penal code is, that's the penal code, okay. So I wanted to clarify. So this isn't just a civil issue. It's a retroactive civil issue, not a criminal issue. The ordinance before.
Provides an affirmative defense to a civil unlawful detainer action.
For that, for that one month.
Yes.
Right, okay.
And then can I just say, it's really not retroactive in that it is applicable by picking the September 12th date.
Right.
The eviction is not going to occur until after today.
Okay.
And therefore, it's really not retroactive. The person hasn't been evicted yet. The landlord has not started the eviction proceeding yet.
Okay. Councilmember Carlton, I apologize for the interruption. Thank you for allowing me to clarify.
Of course. All right. So for those who have been talking about this being an issue of us voting for further rent control, it's not. So now I understand this is providing affirmative defense so that people more clearly understand what the cap is that's been put forward by the state and it's preventing people from no-fault evictions. So I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Combs.
Were you going to say something?
No, it's all right, you can go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I have one quick question in relation to a scenario in which a tenant is, can avail themselves of relocation assistance. In the sense that if a municipality has a program that's more generous than what's outlined in the state, then the municipality's sort of provision is what rolls. But in our situation, as I understand it, right, we're talking about two different pots of money. Does that play into it? Because in the state provision, right, it is the landlord who's playing the relocation assistance for our provision, which is more generous, but is not coming from the landlord. Is there a way in which we can sort of make sure that in those situations, we're getting what the state allows for the tenant to get from the landlord and then whatever additional we want to provide as a city is then provided?
I actually think our state relocate, I mean, so this is separate from what we did earlier this year. I'm pretty sure a relocation ordinance does come from the landlord.
Yeah, it does.
It does.
Oh, it does.
It does, yeah. It's different from the pot that we did earlier this year. We have our tenant relocation ordinance that was passed in the prior year. That comes from the landlord.
Are you sure? Is that how the city attorney understands that for relocation assistance, it is the landlord who pays?
Yes, yes.
And for the city and not the pot of money that the-
Samaritan House.
Yeah.
No, we have a prior ordinance.
Oh, prior to this council term?
Yes.
So I know that the three months' rent comes from the landlord. I'm not sure about the fourth month's rent.
The fourth month rent under the special circumstance would come from the landlord as well.
Okay, yes. So our ordinance reads, "Special circumstances. Households will be paid one additional month of rent for a maximum of four months' rent." So it appears to also come from the landlord.
I remember that because some of the landlords came to me really stressed because they felt they needed to raise the rent. they felt they needed to raise the rent to cover the three months that they were going to have to pay. Because a lot of landlords had rent that low that they weren't making a profit to put away to save for paying the three months.
But when does ours, ours kicks in only in scenarios where it's been taken off the market, right?
Or cause.
We can have, unless the city attorney--
So the way our ordinance works is if there is an eviction for any reason except for five different reasons, then the relocation payment would be triggered. And so the five situations that are excluded are what we would refer to as sort of a no cause basis, a conversion of any portion of a mobile home park, a landlord's compliance with an enforcement order, the residential household is required to vacate due to damage from an earthquake, temporary displacement, and expiration of a lease that was not extended by the Civil Code. And any other circumstance, the relocation payments would be required.
And that's if someone, for example, wants to move into the home themselves, they still have to pay the relocation?
The reason why we had this, this is one of the reasons why I was comfortable with the amount of money in the fund earlier this year, is because we already had this provision. The one thing, so I'm going to go ahead and I'd like to ask a question about Costa-Hawkins. Because when I went through all of this analysis, the thing that, so I'm, so just to get this out there, I'm okay with moving forward with the ordinance tonight. But the one thing that gave me pause was the retroactivity, or not retroactivity bill, but I'm not applying this to Costa-Hawkins-covered residences prior to the governor's declaration, and whether or not that could cause us an issue, because the legislation addressed Costa-Hawkins, but we don't have the power to do that as a local jurisdiction. And so that was the issue that I want to make sure we don't get sued over.
So the, by incorporating the state legislation by reference, then we're using the definitions and the time period. So units that received, I guess it was a final permit of occupancy within the last 15 years, are not subject to this. So it applies to the older units, which are not protected by Costa-Hawkins. There is this window between units that are 15 years old, and when Costa-Hawkins was effective, which was, what was it, 1978 or 1995? So there's that period of time. So it's like a 10-year, 11-year, nine-year, whatever that window is. Forget my math, I can't do it that quickly. But there is some, a window where people could argue that they're protected by Costa-Hawkins. On the flip side, we're really only talking about this a very limited period of time. Their rents are going to be rolled back effective January 1, 2020 anyway. So it is this, a period where they've issued a rent increase notice after September 12th and before October 27th.
Right.
So it is, what is it, a--
I know, but technically, I want to be compliant with the law. That was the thing, was when I looked at it, I was like, okay, it's this very tiny window.
So the most rent they could have, so let's say they gave a rent increase notice on September 12th, it would be effective December 12th. So we're talking about 18 days of increased rent, and then it gets rolled back on January 1, 2020.
Okay, that's fair.
So the risk, financial risk, is pretty de minimis.
Stacy, do you have anything you want to try to clarify?
I have--
I can answer the question.
I think the question that I've had universally from council was if you had anything that you'd heard that you wanted to try to clarify as well.
I think--
Yeah, if you could come to the microphone.
I think the main thing that I would emphasize to this council is that whatever--
Can you pull the microphone closer?
Whatever, thank you. Whatever ordinance would be enacted today, if you chose to move forward, would be time-limited. It would be from today, November 12th, to December 31st, and then the state law would take over. And I think the local ordinance does mirror the state law in every other respect. So it is a time-limited situation, just to really protect tenants who have been frankly exploited by landlords, who are preempting the state law and trying to get around it. So if you have any further questions, I would be happy to try and answer them, but--
Okay. Any further questions?
No, I was just, we talk about affirmative defense, and just for everybody out there, not that I, a lot of you know what that is, but just for those of you who don't know what that is. Affirmative defense is when you have a legally defendable reason for not following a certain rule. So that if you know that someone's asked you to do something that's not legally enforceable, they can't get upset at you or punish you in any way for doing what is legally defendable, if that makes sense. So I just wanted to explain that to the people that are here, so that they better understood what we were talking about when we talk about affirmative defense.
Yeah, so if this ordinance was passed as it's written in the amended, in the amended form, for example, my client, Sue Lacoste, who you heard from, she received her 60-day no-cause notice on October 8th. And then so it would expire on December 8th. And therefore, that is before, so it expires before an unlawful detainer is filed, and a notice has to expire first, and then an unlawful detainer can be filed. So under this ordinance, she would be protected, even though she received the notice on October 8th, which is before today's date, November 12th.
Kind of a minor correction. The official notice to vacate said that we have to be out like December 31st.
Okay.
They gave them a certain--
That's right. They gave them a couple extra days in excess of 60 days. But still, very curiously, right before the January 1st date that we've been talking about here. So she would have until December 31st to vacate. And upon the expiration of that 60-day notice, then the landlord could file an unlawful detainer case to try and regain possession of the rental unit. If and when her landlord files that unlawful detainer case, this urgency ordinance would provide her with a affirmative defense, saying, you know, "I am in possession of my unit, contrary to the 60-day notice that told me to move out by December 31st, but I am legally in possession of that unit because of this Menlo Park urgency ordinance."
I was thinking of it more in terms of paying rent, that they can't evict someone for not paying rent, that they're not legally bound to--
I'm sorry, could you clarify your question?
Mr. McClure?
I have a question for Stacy. Great.
I will try my best to answer it. I'm not--
Okay. So our ordinance expires on December 31.
Yes.
So if the 60-day notice requires your clients to be out on December 31, and our ordinance expires on December 31, can they be evicted in 2020 because they didn't vacate under the notices that they were given already?
So the way that the ordinance is written, Section 3, Sub A 2, says, "The provisions of this urgency ordinance shall apply where a notice to vacate or quit any such rental unit has been served prior to, as of, or after the effective date of this urgency ordinance," so November 12th, "but where an unlawful detainer action has not yet been filed." So Sue's landlord could not file an unlawful detainer action until December, I mean, I'm sorry, January 1, 2020, because the notice expires on December 31st. So if and when the landlord files an unlawful detainer action on January 2nd, this ordinance would provide her with an affirmative defense to that unlawful detainer action.
Even though the ordinance goes away on December 31st?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Just wanted to make sure there wasn't a gap there.
And I want to clarify, so Costa-Hawkins was incorporated into AB 1482, so I don't have to worry about that issue.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Councilmember Nash.
I would like to amend the motion, or whatever I need to do to make it staff report, the staff report 19258 CC, the amended one, rather than what's shown on the council, the screen, which is 251. In other words, that we--
It's the motion.
The agenda item.
Yeah, it's the agenda item. So it's actually just the revised ordinance, number 1063. All right, so we have a motion on that. We have a second. Councilmember Carlton?
Why was this change made? Sorry, I got it right as I was walking to the dais, so I was just wondering--
Okay, so this goes back to your very first question, which was the just cause eviction question.
Right.
And when you read the language, your reading language from the older staff report, that said it only applied to notices given after the effective date. If you look at the red line, it also applies to evictions after the effective date, have to have been based on a just cause eviction. And so that's, it was a clarification, so that it would apply to notices given, but also to evictions that occur after November 12th.
And--
I see.
Specifically, so it would apply to at least one of the tenants who got up and spoke this evening.
So before we vote, I just want to note for the record, the California Apartment Association was neutral on AB 1482, and it came before the legislature. I believe the Realtors Association issue was addressed as it relates to the Costa-Hawkins issue. I found the, I spent a lot of time talking to the city attorneys about this issue, specifically about what had occurred between September 16th and October 26th, which is really what appears to me the effective date in question when we're looking at what rent increases. And what I saw during that time period, in terms of what rental increases had occurred, and how that had been imposed upon those stories that had come forward, have influenced me to go ahead and take this vote. It's a small period of time, but it's definitely a period of time where people, had the governor made his emergency declaration on September 16th, I would not see the reason for the rental increase to portion of the ordinance, but he did not.
Okay, so just one clarification, it's September 12th, not September 16th.
I'm sorry, September 12th.
Yeah.
To October 26th.
I just don't want anybody to be mistaken--
And I appreciate you correcting me, that I had the 26s stuck in my head. So with that, but I did think it'd be fair that people understand why I vote the way I am. Everyone else ready to vote? Okay.
The motion passes unanimously.
And just for the record, I really, we owe a lot to Cara for working so hard to get this done so quickly--
Thank you.
To get the original draft and the staff report out on Thursday, with less than 48 hours after the council had acted and provided the direction. So I just want that to be acknowledged.
Thank you. Okay, our next item this evening then would be E2, award a contract to LDB Specialty Vehicles in the amount of $478,000, $478,776.50 for the purchase of one command vehicle. Chief Dave Portini and Sergeant Aaron Dixon will introduce the item. Howdy.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members. Dave Portini, you're police chief, and this evening, we're here to speak about a mobile command post that I spoke about back in June of this year. If you recall, on June 18th, the city council approved Resolution 6507, which adopted the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget and capital improvement plan, and also appropriated funds. One of the service level enhancements that was approved through the CIP process was to include a mobile command vehicle for emergency operations. And I'm going to be letting Sergeant Dixon here, who did the yeoman's work of all the research into this, into this mobile command vehicle, to explain the need for it, and also exactly what it is. Sergeant Dixon.
Thank you. Good evening. So a mobile command vehicle is a vehicle that we can utilize to run dispatch operations, write police reports, and conduct meetings in a myriad of events, for training, for public events, pre-planned and spontaneous police or law enforcement events, and disaster response. It brings a dedicated dispatcher or two to the event, so that they're not distracted by the regular calls for service. It provides private areas for meetings, for stakeholders, city council members, police officers, for interviews of victims or witnesses, just a spot where a police officer can take someone and not be out standing in the street. Also, it gives an area for participants in the event to work, write police reports, plan for the next phase of the event, that sort of thing, and to rest. And finally, it gives us a good, stable power source to run the communications equipment, our radios, work monitors, and cellular phones. We chose, we placed the, or we put a request for proposals, and we got two responses. We went with the one that we recommend to go with, the one that's cheaper, one. They were very, very, very responsive, and when we reached out to different companies, looking at different vehicles, doing the research. And they, being that we're not a large organization, we don't have the staffing to have a dedicated vehicle operator. That puts some constraints on what we can do, or what's practical. For instance, it wouldn't be practical for us to have a vehicle that requires a special classification of driver's license. So only like one or two people at the PD would be able to drive it. The benefit of this company that we're talking about is that they can create a vehicle for us that a standard Class C driver's license, someone with a Class C driver's license can operate. And it has a vehicle automation system, which is very unique, that it, at a central monitor, everything you need to do to get this vehicle up and rolling, and then, once you're there, everything you need to do to get it operational is from that one monitor, and it prompts you to do certain things. For instance, before you're going to drive away, it tells you, you probably should pull up the jacks that hold the vehicle in place, so you don't drag them across the road.
And as far as the impact on city resources, as I discussed back in June, what we have proposed is a use, usage of the SLUF, the Supplemental Law Enforcement Fund, and COPS funding balance. Currently, we have approximately $160,000 that we have banked in that fund from the last year, year and a half. And then to borrow forward for the next three fiscal years, as that funding is $100,000 every year, in order to pay for this. So the overage, $319,000 would come from the CIP funds, and then be paid back by the COPS funding from the 1920, 2021, and 21, 22 fiscal year funding. And one of the things that Sergeant Dixon did is kind of gave you a little bit of an example of some of our surrounding agencies, the type of vehicles they use. Interestingly enough, a lot of other organizations use this same company to make their vehicles. And also, some of the statistics from those vehicles are also, and pictures included in what these vehicles look like. And with that, we'll be glad to answer any questions.
Do you have any public comment on this this evening, Ms. Heron? Okay, any questions? Steph? Okay.
Good evening again, Pamela Jones. I attended the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors meeting this morning, and there was a presentation by the Fairgrounds people, and I don't know their whole name, but what most struck me is how coordinated all of the emergency services are throughout the state when it comes to the Fairgrounds, and the services that they provide if there's a major disaster, and how they communicate. So what it did is it made me think of, how do we communicate in the city with our emergency providers? Are they doing things together? So, for example, is this vehicle a part of the emergency plan coordination with the Fire Department, and with the city in general? So it was just kind of a question to kind of understand how we're, everything's working together, how does it work with the county, and so forth. Thank you, bless you.
Thank you. Okay. Bring it back up, we have a motion from Councilmember Carlton to, what is your motion, Councilmember Carlton, to accept, to award? Okay.
I wish it was electric, but besides that, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for, for professional staff? Councilmember Nash?
What is the rationale for Menlo Park having a vehicle when there's San Mateo County, the Menlo Park Fire Board, and Palo Alto, which are all, anyway?
Right, right, and the, the issue is, yes, we could borrow other people's vehicles, the problem is that they're not equipped with our radio systems and our systems for the city. To answer the, the speaker's questions, this would be a city, actually, a city asset that would be used, not only for the Police Department, but every other, any other department that would need it in, in our city, and it would be specifically equipped with City of Menlo Park radios, computer systems, our, our forms, our, our, our way of doing the, the work that we need to do. Now, having said that, we do coordinate very closely with our, our, our neighboring cities and the county. I mean, San Mateo County is one of the premier counties in the cooperation that we have, not only on, on police and fire, emergency services, and everything, and everything else. So it would be, it would be just a seamless integration into that Office of Emergency Services program.
Thank you. And what does the existing watch commander vehicle, the Ford Explorer, what is that missing that this provides?
Almost everything. The, the Ford Explorer has a whiteboard on a, in a, on a console in the back with a, with a, you know, with a radio, and, and having myself stood out for 15 hours at incidents behind the vehicle as the command post, it was, it was totally inadequate for what we needed for it to be. We could have borrowed another organizations, but if we, if we borrowed another city's or the county's vehicle, we basically would just use it as a shelter. But in this case, with this vehicle, we'd be able to use as an operational center, a mobile command post. So that, that's what is missing out of the, the watch commander's vehicle.
So there's no radio, the exist, the radio does not exist in the watch command post?
No, there is definitely, there's a radio, as I said, there's a whiteboard and a radio. That's really all there is in, in the watch commander's vehicle, it's, it's just an SUV. You, you open up the back, and, and you have a whiteboard, and you have a radio.
Do you have full communications in the watch command vehicle?
Yes, we have, we have, we have a radio that communicates with any, any agency in the county, and outside the county.
Thank you.
Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, no, I just want to add, I, I think the last time this, this came up during the budgeting process, the chief and I went back and forth, and I think I, I understand, and have gotten emails about the concern of, of a town of this size, whether there's this, this need. But I, I do think that, I think, once you go down the road of us having our own police department, right, I mean, you, you could say that like, all of these little towns having their own police department is kind of inefficient, but once you go down the side that, that, you know, we require, we prioritize local control, then I do think that those agencies that provide the structure for that local control should have, you know, all of the, the things necessary to, to, you know, in, in this case, respond in emergency situations. So I do get the concern, and the concern, again, like I've gotten from, from some emails, but I think the larger issue, right, is, is, is that giving the police department, I think, something that is specific to, to their needs, and that they're familiar with, and that has their things in it, is, 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 is important. And I do think that it's, it's a, a larger debate about, or issue about, you know, sharing resources, but, again, I think, like I said, I think it's a larger, I think it, it's another level above, you know, an emergency, you know, sort of vehicle like this.
Mayor Protem Taylor?
Thank you. My, my question is, how often do you expect that you'll use the mobile command center, compared to how you use the current vehicle that you have now?
Well, I, I think it would be used for every situation that was pre-planned, whether it's a parade, or it is a block party, or it is a protest, which we have many of, especially because of Facebook, and all those incidents that, you know, in my, in my eight years here, that I've gone to dozens of incidents where this, this vehicle would have been really helpful, to, to have command and control of a large-scale situation, whether it is a, a fire situation, or if it's a, specifically a police situation. So I would say it will be used dozens and dozens of times a year.
Thank you.
We have a second, but Councilmember Combs, I just have a question about the money. So, there is an assumption that there will always be that, that $100,000 in that fund every year, and my question is, and I probably should know it after all these years, but where does that $100,000 come from? And are we sure it's always going to come for the next three years?
Well, maybe the chief should answer this.
Well, it, we've been getting it since 1995, and it is, it is the Supplemental Law Enforcement Fund from the state that goes to the county, the county administers it, and then gives it out to each, or, a, a city police department, and it's specifically, it's specifically for frontline police equipment, it can't supplant anything else, and in the, in the past, we've used this to buy-
For radios.
-equipment, tasers, body cameras, things like that.
Yeah.
So either way, we have to use it for some kind of police equipment.
Councilmember Nash?
Or, do we have, I'm just remembering something possibly that we needed to upgrade our body cameras?
In the, in the budget, you actually approved that already.
So that's not, that money is not competing with this money?
No, that was general fund money.
Could that be money from here? From, could that, could this money be used for that purpose?
Well, it's, that expenditure's already been made, but it's the, the, the funds that we've used over the years have been for things like upgrades of tasers, new tasers, new, new body cameras, new frontline, frontline equipment. But the answer to your question, yes, it, it could certainly come out of this fund.
So if we, so we could have taken the money instead of from the general fund and spend it on the, on, use this money for the body cameras?
That's correct.
In the future, that would be a good thing to know.
Yeah, I mean, so the problem, I, I mean, can, well, the, the reason why is because the general fund monies, because if this is for frontline, if this fund is for frontline equipment, when we take general fund money out of the general fund, that goes away from city services that are for residents, if there's a dedicated funding source for that frontline equipment, so that gives me pause, because now I'm thinking, well, can we get that money back into the general fund, so I can think about doing programs for the kids at Bell Haven, and the other things that we use general fund money for, that we're short on money this year for? Yes?
Well, this, this money is just being, it's being borrowed, it will be, it will go back into the general fund as we get the funding from the COPS funds in the, the next three fiscal years.
No, but, but that's not my point, my point is, the $100,000, the $100,000 this year, the, whatever money we spent on, from the general fund to pay for the body cameras, we didn't need to spend it from the general fund, we could have used this money for it, right?
That's correct.
Okay, but would, but we didn't know that.
Well, the, when we did the original budgeting document, that, those, that information was in there, in the past, we, we've used this supplemental law enforcement fund, but with the understanding that we had last year, that we would try, we would bank it for this vehicle that we were attempting to purchase.
I, I think if I can chime in, I, I think, I think you have to accept that the Police Department made the determination that this was a, a priority, and, and so-
Well, no, I don't.
Okay.
I don't have to accept that. As a policy matter, what I can say is, when I'm trying to figure out whether or not to buy a $500,000 vehicle or body cameras, and they both have the same funding source, and if I take a certain amount of money out of the general fund, which could be used for other purposes, then I have to, I mean, basically, what I, it's like taking from Peter to pay Paul, right? And so, that's a policy decision that makes, gets made at the council, whether or not I'm going to pull general funds, so that I can go ahead and save money to do this. And so that's what I'm wrestling with now, is-
But I mean, even if we accept that we didn't specifically know that this money could be used for body cameras, we knew that it could be used for other stuff, and, and we didn't, when, as a council, when this was presented, say like, oh, I mean, you knew generally, like, it could be, it could be used for frontline sort of equipment, and so we didn't at that moment say, oh, I think that the mobile command center is not a priority, there's these other things, even if you, you sort of remove body cameras off, off the table, just other things, there are other things that it could have been, and even still, you know, be used for. From my perspective, again, after the back and forth I had with the chief, I, and again, accepting the mayor's point, that certainly the policy is made from, from the dais, and not, not from staff, but accepting that, that the Police Department saw this as, as a priority.
Councilmember Carlton?
I'll just wait till they're finished talking. They're having a conversation over there. All right, I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with both of you. It would have been nice, had we known when we did the body cameras, to just be told, by the way, previously, this type of thing had been paid for from this fund, we're not doing that this time, because we're saving up for, or we're saving that for a command vehicle, just to let us queue it up, just to let us know. Expectations are always, and transparency helps a lot in terms of us understanding what's coming up. So I, I agree with the mayor that, 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 it's, it's good policy to let us know. I'm assuming, and, and I, I trust you, as a professional, that you wouldn't have done this, and you wouldn't be coming before us, if this isn't something that is going to save lives, it's something that's going to make you safer, and is going to provide better security and safety for the residents of Menlo Park, as, as well as yourself. If, God forbid, there was a real emergency, I would feel better knowing that you have everything that you need, to make sure that this community is, is safe, and that you protect the people you need to protect on staff as well. I'm assuming that this is going to help do that, and that's basically what the staff report has told us. And so in that way, I, I agree with Councilmember Combs. But in the future, it would be advisable to let us know ahead of time when funding shifts happen, so that we can better understand and plan for that ourselves.
Right, and, and I apologize if there's, if there was any confusion, I was under the impression that we had, we had made it clear during the budget presentation, but obviously, I had not, my, my apologies.
Okay, Councilmember, Mayor Protem Taylor?
I have a, a follow-up question about the Office of Emergency Services. There's a, a command vehicle available at the county level, or is that just for county sheriff, or is that available to police officers within the county of San Mateo?
No, we, we, we could always request a, a command vehicle from the county, but as I stated before, the, the command vehicle would not be equipped with our, the specific needs that we would have, it would be a shelter for us, it would be a place to, to shelter for us. It would have some radios, but our command vehicle will be, will be equipped with City of Menlo Park-specific maps, emergency plans, whether it's of all the schools, keys to certain locations would be in that vehicle, that could be immediately deployed, equipment that we're familiar with could be immediately deployed, it would be, it would be a Menlo Park-specific vehicle, not just a county vehicle, that it would, in essence, be a shelter for us.
I have one additional question, and I know this wasn't asked you prior, well, I didn't ask prior to the meeting, and it's not in the staff report, can you tell me in 2015, 16, 17, 18, what the, I think you said the SLF funds were used for? And so you won't be using those funds in the next three years? And then where would those funds come from if the Police Department has another need?
Right, to be perfectly honest, you know, every year, we would actually have to look for things that we, we believe to be frontline equipment, you know, so we would look to see if there was maybe some, you know, vests that needed to be updated, or, or breathing apparatus, you know, to be updated. And because it's very, when the money comes to us, there are strings that say it's very specific what we can spend it on, so, and in the past, we've spent it on new computers for the cars, we've spent it on, you know, iPads for, for, for officers and, and command staff, things of that nature is what we have spent it on in the past. In, for these next three years, I don't, I don't, I don't, we did not have a plan besides what, what's in front of you for the command vehicle, that we had for that money, and that was something that, again, I apologize if I didn't explain that well enough during the budget process.
And I'll be candid, chief, I don't know if you did or didn't, I don't remember, so to the extent that you're giving me an apology that I don't deserve, I apologize for that. I just, I simply just don't recall the point, and so maybe being unfair to be having a sticking point there. What I am trying to figure out, because what I'm balancing in my head right now, is that I know we have the emergency, the big-ticket emergency operations center on the horizon, and I've been trying to figure out how we do that as a city. And then the other thing is the drone program, I know is going to cost money, and if, if that's something that the council wants to do from a policy level. And so what I'm trying to figure out is, similar to Mayor Protem Taylor, is for these other expenses that we're going to be looking at, that are, that are first-time expenses, if we pull this money from that fund, are we looking at general fund, or what are we looking at? Is this really going to be like, it's kind of like, is this really going to be Christmas Day for three years, or is my kid going to ask me for more, and you're not my kid, but you know what I mean?
Right. I, I understand, I understand the sentiment. The, or emergency operations center is a totally different animal, honestly. This, this, this would complement that, this is not an EOC on wheels, this is a mobile command post. So the EOC would be a, a larger capital improvement project. And as far as, you know, things such as, you know, the, the drone program, et cetera, in, in all honesty, that's actually a very small expense, surprisingly enough. So as far as equipment that we are looking for in the future, besides upgrading the equipment we already have, there isn't any real, this is the, really the biggest ticket item that we have in the next three to four years.
But if I could just add, just, I don't want any more surprises for the council, we do have tasers that were requested for replacement in the budget process, and would be coming back to the council in January, and I believe those were going to be funded by the general plan, a general fund.
So what's the cost on those?
I would defer to the chief. I think $60,000 plus or minus.
$60,000.
I'm working off memory, I, I didn't come in with that tonight.
It's, the, the, the upgraded tasers will be less than $1,000 per officer, per year.
How many officers, though, is that?
What's the total?
Uh, 60.
Okay. So, yeah, so what I don't want to end up doing, is I don't want to end up, like, because we're doing this, keep taking from the general fund, so it's like, it's kind of like, we're kind of running a tab on this, on this fund, basically, right? I mean, it's like, okay, so maybe we're extending that out four years from this fund, and at some point, let's like, the shopkeeper with the tab, it's like, okay, but this is the cutoff, and we're going to extend that out. So if you're comfortable with that sort of proposition, and you guys want to sit down and figure out is like, what's the limit on what's, what we can see going out, you know, five years in advance, then I can possibly get on board with this. But what I do not, the general, if, if we have an ongoing funding source for things for frontline, I want to- I want to be real careful about getting into the habit of spending all of it and then taking from the general fund for that, because we do, I mean, and I understand my colleagues' arguments about wanting to always provide you with what you need to save lives, and we do, but we also have sidewalks to put in place from the general fund and other, and transportation improvements that will fall short that come from the general fund and other things that also translate into saving lives balance that we make decisions about every year at budget time of whether we go. So, I just want to be cognizant of that. But, if you guys, if you think you can sit down with the city manager and sort of figure out, like, that those tasers, for instance, would sort of be added to that running tab against this balance afterwards, and we would figure out what it is, then I can get on board if people think we can do that.
So, are you asking us to do that here tonight or to come back?
No, I'm asking for an initial commitment just on the tasers and then to sort of come back with us and let us know how we're going to do that.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
It does.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Nash.
I guess I'm wondering why this is coming to us tonight as opposed to as part of the budget process.
It did come to you as part of the budget process, and it's on page 127 of the budget document. This was one of the enhancements to services that was through this AP that was requested and approved via council. As a matter of fact, I think it was specifically pulled out, because I remember going up and speaking about this specifically, the command vehicle and the need for it.
Just to answer that question, it's coming to you tonight because it's beyond my signature authority.
Yeah. And whenever we do the budget, there's, we do the initial budget, and then there are things that come to us through the year for approval. So, it's not unusual that we're looking at it again. It's great that we got a first look and there are questions during the budget process. So, there are things we've approved in the budget that we've said no to later, and things that weren't in the budget that we spent money on later. So, Mayor Protem Taylor.
I have another question. What about future maintenance on the command vehicle?
One of the positives of this vehicle is we had our public works, our corp yard, the garage, in on the process from the very beginning, so they are able to actually service it.
Thank you.
Is this in the staff report? Where are you parking this thing?
Where are we parking it?
Yeah.
We actually have some space for, how long do we have that space? Right. We have, we have some space for a couple of years where we're going to be able to park it where it has the ability to have the trickle charger and everything that it needs. And then, we're going to be looking for a new space to place it.
Yeah. Okay, guys. So, anyone have anything more they need to vote before we vote? Let's go ahead and go.
The motion passes with Councilmember Nash dissenting.
All right. And now, we have our items that were continued. Thank you. Appreciate the, for the presentation. So, we have items D2 and D3. Go ahead and take them in order, so D2.
Thank you, Mayor Mueller. I pulled this item because I wanted to make sure that this had some language in there from my original request. This was, this is D2 to direct staff to prepare an education series on development and environmental review processes. And I just wanted to make sure, because the language is slightly different, even though it's probably the same, that this was to have citywide workshops on environmental impact reports with the intent of educating the public on policy, process, and procedure required by law to ensure an inclusionary process, and also study sessions on all EIRs to ensure linking all development impacts. And I believe that it's important that we have an outside resource that does the workshops because so many things are moving quickly through the city processes.
Okay. Yes?
So, I would just like to the council to consider, I do think it's an excellent idea to bring in an outside resource, but I think there are some planning issues that are very unique to Menlo Park, and those would best be addressed by Menlo Park staff.
Okay.
So, I think a combination. I think it's a great idea to bring somebody externally, but I think in addition, you need at least some Q and A with Menlo Park staff.
So, when we say a third party to do it, like, are we talking about someone with technical expertise or someone who's just really good at moderating a meeting?
I think someone with technical expertise who can actually break down the concepts into understandable bite-sized pieces, not somebody who is an ex, well, hopefully, they're an expert in SEQA, but they're not, they're able to explain to people the intent of the policy issues without being technocrats about it.
Right. And by bringing in that third party, like, what's, when would we be looking at approving the cost on that?
We have an upcoming budget amendment, so as soon as we find somebody. We don't have anybody in particular in mind.
So, this is something that we may not see until January?
It would be unlikely to see it before January, but we do understand it's important to the council.
Okay. It's something for the new mayor to consider when everyone sees it, so, okay. I don't have any further, anyone have any further? I'm sorry. Councilmember Nash.
I was, I don't know if, who's aware of, the Sierra Club has an individual named Gita Dev, who, I don't know what her capacity is for doing something like this, but she has, certainly has the background, I believe, and could be very helpful.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes?
The item before the council this evening is simply to receive direction so that we can go back, go to the drawing board and develop the education forum in series. And then, we would return to the city council in January at the earliest with a comprehensive plan that outlines what it is that we're looking to achieve if any additional budget is necessary, if, or other resources that may be involved. The Mayor Protem's comments that were in the letter, we can include those in the analysis of putting together an education series, and then the council can make the decision as to whether, with regard to what the program actually looks like when you see the comprehensive package.
Great. Councilmember Nash. Chief, do we have a motion?
I have one additional comment. One of the other concerns that I have is just the amount of time that is going to pass in the number of projects that continue to move forward. And so, in the interest of staff capacity, bringing a third party in that's neutral, that isn't a stakeholder in Menlo Park, I think will be more helpful as far as transparency in that process. So, I appreciate Councilmember Nash's suggestion as far as, I'm not sure if that would be the right person or organization, but there are a few out there. So, it'd be great to have a further conversation with you offline.
Sounds like everybody's on board. All right. Let's get, let's get a motion. You can do, so you can go ahead and make the motion. I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Taylor, you can go ahead and make the motion.
Okay. I want to make a motion to have workshops on environmental impact reports with the intent of educating the public on the policy, process, and procedures, and for this to be citywide, and also study sessions on environmental impact reports to ensure linking all development impacts.
To be conducted by a third party and staff?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second? Councilmember Nash, seconds. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Item D4, I'm sorry, D3, adopt city council procedure CC-19-010, city council powers and responsibilities. Councilmember Nash.
So, I had a couple of questions. One is, one of the comments that was sent in to CCIN seemed like a very good idea, and that was that we have, when a council member is no longer, a council member that, the position goes on to, comes back to the dais and someone else is nominated as opposed to, even if it's midterm. Can we put that in?
So, to my knowledge, the only situation where that exists is in relation to the council's appointment to the Bay Area Water Conservation Agency. And we made the inquiry this last year when the appointment, the council's annual appointments come up in December. BSCA's charter provides that once the city nominates a representative, that they actually take action to appoint the member to the board. And it has happened in the past where we've had a council member midterm, I believe, leave the council but remain on BSCA. So, this is really a BSCA governance issue. It's not something that would fall under the purview of the city council, at least to my knowledge. Other than that, all the other assignments are at the discretion of the council.
I could be wrong. I have to go back and look, but I remember back in January 2013, a previous city council member on BSCA coming and asking to please remain on BSCA, and another council member wanting to be appointed to that position. And council voted to replace the previous council member and put the current council member on that board. I remember that happening.
Yeah, I do, too. But, I think it's the prior council member elected to resign from the board.
No, she came and asked us to leave.
She asked to remain, but when we voted no, she elected to resign. And so, I think, and that's where, what the difference here is that it can be council policy for us to say, if I am elected to a board, or just if it's BSCA's the only one, that should I not be, should I be removed from council before that term is over, I will elect to resign so that the council can appoint someone to that. So, while it is a BSCA authority, we can all agree collectively as a council policy that should one of us leave, we will resign and allow the council can maintain oversight over that, that appointment. And I think that probably makes sense, and it's no offense to our former colleague, but the difficulty is, even though we've had one report out, we have no discussion ever with respect to any report, or any voting that takes place at that board or any ongoing reporting. So, it would be, I would support that in the future, that we would say, if you are on that board, you will, I would agree, I would resign if I were no longer on council. And I think we can collectively come to that agreement.
Can, my suggestion would be, is that when the next time a BSCA position comes up, that you request whoever you elect or place that as a condition of electing a person, that they agree that they will do it. So, do it, tie it right to the election.
So, don't put it in the policies?
I don't think, because it's meaningless, because the person, I mean, you can't remove the person under the BSCA rules, so, but if they've committed at the time that they're accepting the position, that they will resign if they're not reelected to the council?
That's fair. That's fine.
So, I think we just need to remember that collectively when it comes up, which should be in about a year and a half, or a year.
I think it ends soon. All right. So, we have a motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Actually.
Sorry. Councilmember Nash?
Oh, sorry. It's okay. On page 14.
I don't have page numbers, I apologize.
Okay. Under appointment of advisory bodies and advisory body liaisons, there's a table there that has commissions. Does it make sense to have that, the year there or not? Didn't, in other words, 2019 commissions? Since this is a policy, a general policy, I would think you wouldn't want the year there?
It could be struck. I don't, I don't think it adds any meaning to the table.
Thank you. I have a...
Mayor Protem Taylor.
Thank you. I have a question about the advisory bodies. What is the purpose of a city council member being a voting member on a committee and only a liaison on a commission?
That's the difference between a commission and a committee.
But, we have task force.
So, I mean, it's like the finance committee. So, the finance committee is comprised of five members, two council members, or now seven members, two council members, and they are voting members. But, in all of the other, the commissions are bodies that do not involve council members. They're council-appointed commissions, and so, council members would not be voting members because they're not members of the commission. They are members of the finance committee. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Taylor.
This is on the ad hoc subcommittees. Is there a way to add benchmarks, timelines, action items with staff support so that we have an ad hoc committee that lasts two weeks or two months, that it's clear? I think it came up in one of the previous council meetings.
Like, at the time that you create the ad hoc committee, is, establish a timeline or intended or?
Yes.
Estimated timeline?
Yes. I received a lot of questions regarding the district subcommittees and the public wanting to know and not being able to respond. And the subcommittee still exists, and it's been in existence since June. So, just, if there's any way we could clarify it or no?
I didn't know we still existed. I thought we wrapped up.
Well, there you go. We don't know.
I think the intention is to, as we pointed out during the housing study session last week, that will, what do you, discontinue the subcommittees, and that will be in a report to the council December 10th. But, and, I mean, we could, but I think sometimes we don't know how long the ad hoc committees will, will last.
So, in light of the questions that I received with the District One Subcommittee, I'm just trying to think, policy-wise, what would make sense to give a little bit more transparency and comfort to the public?
Well, it's going to depend subject matter by subject matter, but, I mean, we could make an estimate when the council appoints those subcommittees. I mean, ultimately, it's somewhat up to the council subcommittee and the council.
You could say, we could say just arbitrarily, not arbitrarily, but within a reasonable, that on ad hoc subcommittees, every four months, there'll be a check-in as to how much longer the subcommittee will exist.
Right. You could absolutely do that.
We could say something like that.
Right.
Like, after every four months, they'll be on a council agenda, what current status is and how much longer estimated to exist.
Right.
Does that sound good?
Yes. And would that need to be a part of the policy here, or is that something we would establish when we create the subcommittee?
We could throw a sentence in the policy somewhere.
Yeah, we can just add it in.
Okay. I have a couple of other things on here as far as the ICMA Code of Ethics. I would like to include in the motion that we use the current October 29, 2019 version. It's, there's one sentence that's different than what we have here in the policy.
What's the sentence that's different?
The sentence here. This is for the city manager. I'm sorry, I'm getting confused between the redacted and not redacted. And here, well, the Code of Ethics on the ICMA, number one says, "We believe professional management is essential to efficient and democratic local government by elected officials." And the line that's in the current policy says, "Be dedicated to the concepts of effective and democratic local government by responsible elected officials." It's slightly different.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. The ICMA Code of Ethics, as a member, I recently received... Mr. Mayor, if I may, the ICMA Code of Ethics, as a member, I recently received advice that they're looking at actually three of the tenants that are here, so they, it is a living document. We, we can definitely update the Code of Ethics that's in this policy to reflect the current ICMA Code of Ethics. I just want to point out that they do change every so often, and so the policy could be updated to provide for the current ICMA Code of Ethics amended as necessary administratively.
Okay, so it wouldn't have to come back before the council when it changes? Okay.
I don't know about that.
But you could also just refer to it, right? You could say, and incorporate the ICMA city manager ethics.
I'd actually prefer to go versions, because I don't know, I mean, candidly, I don't know, maybe one, one year the ICMA goes and does something that council isn't happy with, right? Or the city manager isn't happy with, so.
So to keep it clean, I would recommend, because the attachments have a similar issue, you would have to come back and, and update the attachment. So what I would recommend is changing the, the language to reflect the current ICMA Code of Ethics, and then direct staff to return if there are future edits for city council approval.
Okay. Does that work for you?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have more? Mayor Protem Taylor?
Oh, go ahead. I believe that the mayor is the person who's supposed to be the point person for press inquiries. Do we want to have that in these roles and responsibilities?
Existing city council policy has a whole chapter on communications that outlines the mayor's role as the primary spokesperson for the city. That is a matter that would come back to the council.
Okay, so that's not part of this policy and procedure?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's probably a good point to tell you guys all. So the sunshine ordinance is part of that other document, and I've met with staff today because that was my hope that we would get that to you all this year, and I know people want it. I've been informed it's, it's not going to be done by this year, so it's something that we'll all look at early next year. As you can imagine, that, it's just, it's how it is. So, but what we'll do, I talked with the city manager, and so it's clear to the public why that is, there's going to be an information item on a future agenda before the end of the year, so the public understands what the delay was on that. But I did want everyone to know in good faith, having working with staff, did want to get that done this year, especially during my term as mayor. But it will get done, so. Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and take Councilmember Nash's question. Are you done? All right. Let's take a, let's take a two-minute recess. Let's take a five-minute recess. Okay, we are back, back on the record, and back on the record, we're back. So any other questions for staff before we move this item? Councilmember Carlton has made the motion. Can I have a second? Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I believe that concludes our consent and regular business items. Moving on to information items, there are no presentations, staff is available for questions for item F one or F two. Anyone have any questions?
I have a report up.
Okay, we're going to, we'll move, so city manager's report, do you have one this evening?
I don't have a report.
Councilmember reports, Councilmember Carlton.
Just to let you know, the difference between a sister city and a friendship city is friendship cities, like when you're dating, and a sister city is when you decide you like each other and you want to commit. And the sister city group voted that they would like to move from friendship to sister city with Bizan Japan, since that's been going for four years, and the kids have gone back and forth, and everybody's feels committed and, and love. And so they would like it to be queued up, whether you want it on a, on a consent item or whatever, they would like to put forward that we move forward and, and become a full sister city with Bizan Japan.
Okay. We will talk about the city manager, with the city manager about when we can get that on the, on the calendar for, for approval or discussion, or however it would go on.
I think it's tentatively scheduled for either December 10 or January 14.
Okay, thank you. Excellent. I do have something to share, and she's not here, and I wish she was here. We all, and I don't know if you know this yet, Starla, we did, we had a location for the Jerry Rice Toy Drive downtown, and it fell out. And we've spent quite a bit of time the last few weeks trying to find a location, and on Saturday morning, I got a call from Fran, and she had helped us secure a location, and we have one now. And so it is definitely going to happen. Ms. Hoskins is providing the insurance paperwork tomorrow, and so the downtown will have, be full of NFL alumni this, during this holiday season, and, and we hopefully can get word out to people to go buy toys at Cheeky Monkey, and it'll benefit five different toy drive charities in the area. So basically, kids want to get their autograph with Jerry Rice or whichever NFL Hall of Fame player, they got to show up with the toy for the toy drive.
That's nice. And, and a shout out to Cheeky Monkey for the past two years, they've worked with the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts, I think the first year too, to, every time someone bought a present and donated it for the fire victims, they also donated, and were hugely generous on that. So big, huge shout out. I love it, I love supporting people in the community that support the community. So thank you again to Cheeky Monkey for all their continued support.
Yep. Councilmember Nash.
Mayor Mueller, brief interruption. What is the location of the toy drive?
It'll be, the location will be 807 Santa Cruz Avenue in the old Interro site. Yes.
So I apologize, I somehow missed, what is happening with the informational items?
We, I asked if we had questions on the informational items, and there was no questions, and so we moved to the next item.
I have questions on the informational items.
Okay.
I apologize.
All right. With that, we will come back to the informational items. Are they questions that you can ask staff without us?
Well, I guess what I'm wondering is, are we proceeding, does that mean we are proceeding with the contract?
On which one?
On, for the F one, Small Business Roundtable? Or what is?
Are you asking, would we proceed with the economic development contract?
Right. In other words, if, given that, I guess my questions depend on what is proceeding, given these are informational items, and they're under your?
Right.
Budget limit.
So, are, are, oh, I'm sorry, under my what?
You're, you have authorization to, I believe, to proceed with any of these items as far as the, they're below your budget, they're within your budget.
My signature authority, yes. So it would be my intention, if there are no comments from the council, it would be my intention to proceed.
Okay, in that case, I would like to discuss the Small Business Roundtable and the Downtown Street Cafe. I have comments on both.
All right, let's bring them back. If it's a question of whether or not they're going to proceed, then should we bring them back as regular business items?
That would be great.
I, I think it would depend on the questions.
All right, we're not going to be able to vote on them tonight. Either way, we'll reach consensus on them tonight, so we can ask some questions.
Well, I'm happy to do it offline.
Okay, that's fine.
I just didn't want us to, I didn't want the motion, things to start moving without asking some questions.
If it's not resolved, then all I need, all that will be required is just, I want to hear it as a regular business item, and we'll get it on the agenda.
Okay.
Talked about as a regular business item. It's fine. No problem. Okay. Any other questions? All right, I think we've covered everything this evening, so thank you guys for, everyone making time for this special meeting this evening, and with that, we are adjourned.